So I'll call it to order.
I called it order.
You got a fan, I'm telling you, you're fancy.
Wow, I've got new technology, all right. All right, well, I'll do that again, so it's good to know. Call to order, the planning board of Effingham County, August 12th, 2025. Six P M., we will start the meeting. We'll start with the roll call. I am chairman, Ryan Thompson. Vice Chair Jake Patrick.
Here.
Mr. Neil Kessler.
Here.
Mr. Walter Ryan Boykin.
Here.
And Ms. Lindsey Smith.
Here.
All right, we have everyone in attendance and have a quorum. All right, the next item on the agenda is the invocation and the pledge. Those that are able, please stand for the invocation and then we'll roll right into the pledge. Dear Heavenly Father, please be with us tonight. Give this board wisdom to hear the, to hear the petitions, to be, to fair to both sides and to make decisions that are for the best for this county. But I'd be remiss if I didn't mention that this Thursday will be the 24th anniversary of September 11th. And please be with all those that lost so many that day. It's still, can't believe it's been 24 years, but please, please give this country some remembrance of that day. And remember how we felt the weeks following, that we were proud to be one country, one America. We're so torn now and we could use a little bit of that. In your name we pray, amen.
I'd like to lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. All right, moving into item five, the agenda approval. Are there any? Oh, yeah. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm looking at the, wrong agenda, sorry about that, looking at the old. The agenda approval, sorry, is there any considerations or adjustments to the agenda? Sorry, I was looking at the minutes.
No, sir. No changes.
A little confused. All right, so there's no need for amendment. I will ask for a, a motion to accept the agenda.
I make a motion to accept agenda.
All right, we have a motion, have a second.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Any ayes? Agenda is adopted as proposed. All right, moving into public comments. So we'll only hear public comment on the items on the agenda that was just approved. Those comments should pertain, and shall only pertain to the agenda items. Would you wish to make remarks? Please come forward, clearly state your name into the microphone before commencing to speak. Please don't speak from your, your chair. And it looks like a fairly small crowd tonight, so hopefully we'll have to limit it to 15 minutes, but each side will get 15 minutes. It'll first be the applicant that's proposing the rezoning item, and then there will be an equal 15 minutes given to any opposition, and that would be the combination of the opposition. So please be considerate of others that may want to speak if that, if that happens.
Mr. Chairman, oh, yep, can we go back and do the minutes, please?
Oh, I skipped all the minutes, I'm sorry. I'm all discombobulated. Yes, all right, so we'll back, back up to minutes. So consideration to approve the minutes of August 12th, 2025 meeting. Mr. Boykin, I think you had one or two?
Yeah, I just happened to see where the invocation, the pledge to the flag said Ryan Thompson and not Ryan Boykin on it. So I don't know if that's a big deal and needs to be changed, but.
It's not, but I think it's good to clarify, but heaven would create as possible.
Yes, sir.
Anything else, any other amendments or changes to the minutes? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve as noted with the noted changes.
I make a motion to approve with the noted changes.
We have a motion, have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any ayes? All right, thank you, sorry about that, Chelsea.
No, you're fine.
Thank you for calling me back to order here. Okay, related to the, the packets, what we're reviewing here, those packets and agenda packets are posted to the county's website. Any additional documents presented at the meeting shall be submitted to the clerk for receipt and recorded and distribution to the board. So if you do have anything additional that wasn't submitted or was not in our packet, please make sure that they just come forward and are given to, to the clerk here. All right, moving into new business, looks like we have two items on the agenda tonight, so public hearing number one. Go through this, the fact that all of these items presented tonight, we are just a recommending body. The Board of Commissioners makes the final decision related to any rezoning action. Those will be presented to the public, to the Board of Commissioners on October the 7th, same room, same time, six o'clock. So please make sure you, if you're an applicant, make sure you are back here for that board meeting, because that, that will be the critical one you should want to make sure you're here for. All right, moving into public hearing number one. Charles Nettles requests a rezone plus or minus 4.772 out of 9.8 acres from AR1 to AR3 to allow for permitted uses in AR3. This is located at 1246 McCall Road. That's the fourth district map number 390 parcel 15. Ms. Chelsea.
Yes, sir. So again, the applicant is requesting to rezone of that 4.772 to AR3. Again, this will be our first AR3 application, and AR3 is agricultural residential, 2.5 acres or more. So this is with the intent of giving the parcel to their children. The parcel will be subdivided into two, as you see. And what I mean by that is the overall parcel, so the 9.8 will be subdivided. One will be 5.1 acres, which will remain AR1, and then they are requesting that 4.772 to go to AR3. The surrounding parcels are zoned AR1 and AR2. McCall Road is a county maintained road, and the future land use map does project this as agricultural residential, as you can see there on your screen. Staff has reviewed the application and the application is complete with the following conditions, that development services shall review and sign the plat. Then the plat shall be recorded for the zoning to take effect. And then any new encroachments onto McCall Road shall require an encroachment permit from Effingham County. This is the submitted plat for approval. So again, just that 4.772 acre is what they are looking to rezone to AR3.
And the applicant may be able to answer this, but are there currently two houses already on the properties or subdividing and creating? Am I seeing that right? Are there two driveways I'm seeing?
I believe there is one, one home currently, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Chelsea. Any questions for staff before we move forward? Okay, is the applicant in the audience? If so, please come forward, state your name, and tell us if there's anything additional than what Ms. Chelsea had there that you want to add to it.
Good evening. My name is Charles Richard Nettles Senior. I have a piece of land as 9.8 acres. It is adjacent to my former home, which was, you see here on McCall Road of a one acre piece. My brother owns the property on the north side and the west side. South of me is the property of Mr. Jordan. And of course, on the east side is McCall Road. Out of that 9.8 acres, I didn't realize when I got the property from my father, who passed away several years ago, and I received it along, and my brother received some other land, is a 9.8 acres. I did not realize at the time until I decided to go and give the boys. My oldest son, who's in the one acre, will get the five point something acres. My youngest son and my dad's former home will be his with the 4.7 acres. I'm just requesting to change that 4.7 to anything other than AR1, two or three would be sufficient. I'm giving the property to them.
Very good, thank you. Any, any questions?
No, sir.
All right, thank you, sir. Just stick around, just in case there's somebody else that has a question.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you, appreciate it. Is there anyone in the audience, anybody additional that wants to speak in favor? Seeing none, anybody in the audience that would like to speak in opposition to this petition? All right, seeing that there is none, we will, we will close the public hearing and now have any discussion amongst the board if there's any necessary, otherwise I'll entertain, entertain a motion.
Seeing, seeing there's no further discussion, I make a motion that we accept the request to dole out the 4.772 acres for the process of 9.8 acre, 9.8 acres making it AR3.
All right, with the conditions that staff had on the.
Correct, correct.
All right, we have a motion, can I have a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right, we have a properly motioned and seconded item. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, well, I guess we technically didn't make history because the Board of Commissioners get to do that, but.
It is still the first application.
That's our, you should be proud, sir, that's the first AR3 that this, this board voted on, so, all right. Okay, thank you for that. All right, moving on to our second and final public hearing of the night. Alice Hurst requests a rezone plus or minus 10.44 out of 25.77 acres from AR1 to AR2 to allow for permitted uses in AR2. The property is located at 1369 Ebenezer Road. It's the fifth district. It's map number 460 parcel 48. Ms. Chelsea.
Yes, sir. So again, the applicant is requesting to rezone 10.44 out of the total 25.77 acres to AR2, which of course is agricultural residential. That is for one acre or more, with the intent of creating eight single family lots. On the lot with the current home, let me pull that up for you. The lot with the current home will access Ebenezer Road through an existing driveway. The other lots will access Long Bridge Road through shared driveways. Staff did meet with the applicant for a technical review committee meeting, and that was discussed in that meeting. Ebenezer Road is a G dot maintained road, while Long Bridge is a county maintained road. And the future land use map does project this parcel as agricultural residential. I do want to note, because I know that the application did mention multi-family or townhomes. This specific application is not for multi-family or townhomes. It is only for the eight single family lots. So staff has reviewed the application and the application is complete with the following conditions. Development services shall review and sign the plat. Then the plat shall be recorded so the zoning can take effect. And any new encroachments onto Long Bridge Road shall require an encroachment permit from Effingham County and comply with the Effingham County Access Management Policy.
Thank you, Ms. Chelsea. Just before we move on, just to clarify for my benefit and maybe some of the others in the audience. While it is agricultural residential, that circle means something as well, correct?
It does. So currently, right now, that purple circle that you see on the future land use map is subject to our, what they're calling a historic overlay district. However, that being said, the historic overlay district has not been determined or voted on for, you know, the specific regulations for that by the Board of Commissioners. That is going to workshop on September 16th, so next Tuesday, to be discussed for that, so.
But it's also identified on the future land use map that way, right?
It is, it is identified on the future land use map as a historic overlay.
Okay. Any other questions for staff before we ask the applicant to come forward?
Based on the workshop next week, how long would it take if all that goes for this to be effective?
So it really does depend on what obviously comes out of that workshop. I foresee if, you know, with the board's comments, I would, I would definitely see something on the, in the October Board of Commissioners for that specific overlay district, if that is what the Board of Commissioners want.
I guess to take it one step further, if it does get approved, what does that change or do to anything with the building in there, anything?
So it, it again will determine, it will be based on what the board, you know, decides that they want to see for that overlay district. It could be anything from signage to the types of uses that would be allowed, again.
So we don't, we don't really know.
At this point, it, it's very much, you know, kind of up in the air with, with what that may look like specifically.
Right, but it's an overlay district, so it would apply whatever the base zoning is, so it's not really any reason, in my opinion, to like, it'll apply one way or the other, because it applies over the top of the underlying zoning.
Yes, sir, you're absolutely right, Mr. Chairman.
Any other questions? All right. If the applicant's here, if we would, please come forward, state your name, and tell us a bit about what you're proposing, and if there's anything additional that Ms. Chelsea didn't cover.
My name is Alice Hurst, and I'm proposing these eight one acre lots in this district. The overlay district, I thought, was no longer, so that's new to me.
Yes, ma'am, so it's, it is going before the Board of Commissioners for a workshop specifically, and that, I, I don't know if it will become something or if it will, if it will cease to exist.
But workshop will be public, right?
The workshop is public, yes, sir.
When is that workshop?
September 16th, so next Tuesday. And that will be at three o'clock, right here in this room.
Okay, thank you. Which I don't have a problem with the overlay district, from what they proposed last time. I mean, it was just finishes that they wanted, materials, building materials they wanted used. And that's fine with me. I had no problem with that.
Anything related to, to what you're currently proposing that you want to add to beyond what Chelsea covered?
Not really. She covered everything, I think. If y'all have any questions, then I'm happy to answer them.
And you understand the access and what's being proposed?
Yes, the shared driveways, yep, because the county did tell me that it would have to be shared driveways on Long Bridge.
Right. And ideally, I mean, if we can make it to where it's, county engineer approves what the plan is, we're not, we're not the access control management, so just because it's on this map this way, I don't consider that, that means that it's the way it has to be or shall be, as long as it meets the standards of the county and is the best plan from a county engineering standpoint. I don't know that there's been some thoughts and ideas, again, it's not our project, but about, could you do something that even had a single point of access that had an easement across the front to provide access to all the lots? I, I, I don't particularly care to make that a condition, because I don't know if it's feasible, right? But that's up to the rest of the board, if that's something that you, that you wanted to discuss, but it is unique, it's a unique area. That's the reason I was asking about the overlay and the historic district elements. So certainly understand what you're asking for, I believe.
I have a question about the lot one. What, what is the plans for access to lot one?
There's already a driveway there.
And that's from Ebenezer?
Road, mhm. There's already a driveway in place.
And lot two would be accessed from a shared driveway from Long Bridge?
There's already a driveway for lot two, actually, as well.
So lots three through eight?
Would share, would have a shared driveway. So basically, lot three and four would share, five and six would share, and seven and eight would share. Which I am not a huge fan of shared driveways. But that's, I mean, I'm okay with that, because this is county requirement, so. The idea that you just mentioned about one access road, I guess, I know of one in the county that's like that, is that Fort Howard subdivision over there by the elementary school, Reekin Elementary.
Right, yeah.
Um, that doesn't look bad to me, I mean, but, I mean, I wouldn't have a problem with that.
Yeah, that turned out pretty nice. And so there's no more plans for townhomes on any of the eight lots? It's all single?
Oh, yeah, no, these are just single family, one acre lots, yes, yep.
Jonathan, on that one, she's talking about Fort Howard, that was a concrete entrance coming in and then gravel, then it goes back to concrete. Is that something the county would potentially allow, be in gravel?
Yeah, so as far as, you know, within the right of way, I mean, we'd prefer to see, you know, paved hard surface, but as soon as you get off right of way, you know, it's private property. And I'm trying to think, with this, it's eight lots, so that would be a minor.
Yeah, in a way, it's proposed too, it's actually one less shared driveway, because I think there were four when we talked initially.
Right.
So now there would only be three shared driveways.
One of the things that we'd be looking at, and that we would get into this during the, you know, encroachment permit process, if this were to get approved, but I'd be looking at the access management manual, and, you know, it's 55 miles an hour, and we talked about this during the TRC meeting. But we'd be, you know, potentially looking at doing a design variance down to 45 due to the roundabout being right there. And so that would allow you to put a driveway every 230 feet from the nearest driveway. So I mean, that, that'd be the, the game that we'd be looking at to try to meet that criteria. But, yeah, I mean, we, we would have to look at what your plan is as far as, you know, shared driveways and whatnot. That's the only way that it would be feasible to do this.
And that's why I wanted to bring it up. I know that there's been effort made to this preliminary subdivision plan with proposed lot lines in a very specific location. Until you get to the point of understanding where those shared driveways would be, there may have to be some push and pull of that, so I just wanted to be very clear. Like, we're not, as part of what we're doing tonight, we're not approving the concept plat, just the idea of the zoning, assuming the zoning goes through.
Yes, I understand that.
Okay. Any other questions of Ms. Hurst? All right, well, thank you, ma'am. Stick around in case there's any other questions, please. All right, anyone else in the audience here to speak in favor of the proposed petition? All right, seeing none, I'll open it up to the opposite end. Is there anyone in the audience here to speak in opposition to the proposed rezoning? Yes, sir, please come forward, state your name.
Hi, my name's Kevin Secona. My only concerns would be stormwater, drainage, runoff, that sort of matter. My property is parcel 460B2, next to this property being, looking at developing, but that's really my major concern is just water.
Yeah, all right, thank you, sir. With it being a minor subdivision, there's, other than the subdivision, there's no additional like stormwater, like ponds and controls from an engineering design standpoint, that's, right, I mean, obviously the lots will still have to drain and can't block drainage and allow the drainage to go the natural drainage path, but it's not like there's additional stormwater requirements or engineering requirements related to it from a subdivision standpoint.
No, and the only caveat to that would be is if they were clearing more than an acre, then they would trigger our land disturbance application permit, but I mean, assuming this gets approved, I mean, each lot's going to be, you know, smaller, but I mean, I'm assuming that your plan is probably just to clear enough for the, the house pad and, and then
Okay, that was.
go in and, you know, build the house, so to run, to the chairman's point, I mean, yeah, they would need to maintain the current drainage patterns and you know, that, that's all they would be required to do, so.
Is there any verbiage I can put in there to ensure that there's drainage is studied or anything like that? Like, I'm, I understand you want to.
I understand there's.
If you could, please, please.
Yes.
Yeah, please, please address the board, though, when you're talking.
I apologize.
Yeah, that's fine. Well, I mean, I think as a legitimate point, there have been other things proposed on the site that probably would have triggered a much more extensive stormwater management plan, right, from that standpoint, so it's, with, with what's being proposed and requested, it is, it's not a requirement. It's basically what happens conventionally throughout when you have a one, two, five acre lot, I mean, you can, you have the right to build a house on the lot once it's created. It's, it's not a major subdivision that creates a bunch of infrastructure requirements.
All right, can I ask Jonathan a question? Jonathan, so there won't be a land disturbance permit because it's each broke down an acre and they don't look at the whole eight acres?
It just depends on, I guess, so this is just AR2, and then are they going to be splitting this with this, or is it just going to stay one parcel? I guess one parcel today?
Yeah, so it would be eight.
Okay, so I mean, at the time of them implementing, you know, or disturbing the, you know, property, I mean, you've just got to add it up, the total site, you know, if it's over an acre, then, you know, they'd be triggering a land disturbance, you know, application permit, and then from there, they would have to do a stormwater report.
So is this triggering that?
I, I can't make that determination, because this is just, it's a, it's out of plat, I'm assuming, so I mean, we, I would need to look at plans to see what their limit of disturbance would be for each property, but I mean, typically, no, I don't, I don't see that, that would be a, an issue. It's not over an acre, I mean, it just depends on the size of the house and the driveway, I mean, we'd have to start looking at what they're proposing, so I can't make that determination at this point.
Okay, so if I did 20 lots, all an acre, no disturbance permit?
That would be a major subdivision.
What's a major versus minor?
So as soon as you get to 10, 10 or more, that's a major subdivision, and then you have to do a stormwater report, no matter.
So if you do 10 lots, one acre lots, no permit, no land disturbance permit?
No, you do need one.
Nine would not.
Nine.
Nine, potentially nine.
Okay, anything under 10?
Correct, unless, again, you get to that acre caveat, there's, there's different things that trigger the
Okay.
LDA permit, but the acre is one.
Yeah.
And then the other one would be if you're doing a major subdivision.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Can't say for certain, but I would imagine something like this would probably be. Can't say for certain, but I would imagine something like this would probably be one to two home sites cleared and built at a time, I would assume, but somebody could come in and do all eight at one time also, so.
That's right. It just gets down to the timing of the development as well, so.
Well, I mean, I think the fact of the matter is, is the, the dense approach that have been a bigger subdivision didn't land very softly. So that's what we're, we're here now with a much less dense proposal and, you know, it being at under 10. We have ordinance requirements for that, but, I mean, my gut is, is it's going to be eight individual lots that get sold and driveways get built as joint driveways, and one house will get built one time and another house will get built to another time. It's not really a development per se, it's a subdivision of property.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. Anyone else that would like to come forward to speak in either support or opposition? All right, thank you. Seeing that there are none, I will close the public hearing and we can open it up to any discussion amongst the board members.
I'd definitely like the dense city a lot better, especially at this intersection. I think it's a good fit for the area.
Any other discussion? I mean, my, when I saw it come through, my, my biggest point was the access points, right, and making sure we had clear, clear understanding of that. And I wanted to make sure that the applicant understood that there could still be tweaks to that subdivision proposal, once, once the actual details get worked out about where those access points can be.
And Chelsea, you did say that under AR2, no townhomes are allowed?
They are not allowed.
Okay.
So, no, sir. That is part of why I did put it in bold, because I know that the application had some of that language in it, and so I just wanted to make sure we did understand it was just for eight lots, and AR2 does not allow townhomes or any type of multi-family.
Got you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion from my right hand side? All good?
No, I, I like this for this area. I think this is what the county's looking for, larger parcels, and I think from what I'm seeing and, and hearing, I think she has the intentions to keep as many trees as possible, and that's what I think we need to see.
Thank you. We're good? All right, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion. Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any ayes? All right. So again, that is just a recommendation. Make sure you are here for the Board of Commissioners meeting for the first, for the public hearing, the first reading. All right. Well, unless there's anything else, I do believe that is all. And I think I've been agenda, ending the meeting without an actual motion, which I probably should not have been doing, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hope not. All right, thank you. All right. We are adjourned. Thank you. Appreciate everybody being, being here.
We haven't been adjourned? Huh? We haven't been adjourned?
We have been adjourned, right? Did I not say that?